All right, seeing none, we'll move right to item 10, which is conduct of business. We have a number here tonight, but I'm sure we can get through them very, very quickly. Item 10A, "Receive an oral report and confirm the city council direction regarding the construction of the decorative arch at the San Bruno grade separation."
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, last week, you held a special study session meeting in order to have the opportunity to discuss among yourselves various issues related to the need to provide a definitive decision to the joint powers board related to the community's interest in proceeding with the arch decorative feature at the grade separation site. In follow-up to that meeting, that city council members expressed a variety of interests and requests for additional information specifically about how the, how an arch made out of a solid material as opposed to one that was internally illuminated and clad with the Plexiglas, colored Plexiglas material, how that solid arch would actually look when it was completely fabricated and installed. In follow-on to that discussion, your subcommittee consisting of Mayor Ruane and Councilmember Ibera met as recently as yesterday with JPB staff as well as with the designer from the contract design firm engaged by the JPB, as well as a fabricator's representative out of Washington State, to discuss various specific details about the fabrication and the ultimate appearance up close of this arch decorative feature. We have just received and just provided to you, I see that you have materials in front of you, the Public Services Director has those materials also available to display on, on the screen behind me, which may actually give you a better way of seeing the very specific aspects of this arch feature. In particular, the council's interest centered on how was this thing going to actually be fabricated, and how were the joins, since this is not one big continuous single piece of steel, how would the joins, first of all, how many would they be, where would they be, and how would they be connected to one another in a manner that wouldn't give a sort of pieced-together appearance? And then how would the finish coat of paint look, particularly if somebody were to walk up close to this arch? Would it provide the substantial positive aesthetic appearance that the city has anticipated and expected? So we're diving now into a number of very specific details about construction and appearance of this arch in order to finally be able to give the joint powers board a final decision, which they have requested and urged us that they need to have by the end of this month. So we are very, very close to that time period. Want to be able tonight to simply provide you with what we know, and then to answer your questions. I think I'm going to not continue with a staff presentation, but allow the subcommittee members perhaps to identify your interests, your observations, and we're happy to illustrate the materials that we've received since your, your meeting yesterday. Mr. Rafael Boland from the JPB is in the audience and is available to answer your questions.
We did meet a number of times up until yesterday, and yesterday was our, our last meeting. We had a conference call with the fabricator and the designer, HNTB, was actually present at the, at the subcommittee. So we asked a number of questions. I was frankly, I would just say it straight up, kind of surprised that after all of these months, and we talked about an arch, a lot of this discussion wasn't really, hadn't really been planned before, as far as the coating, as far as how it's put together, what we'd like to see. But having said that, we're going to move forward in the next few minutes, hopefully to get this thing resolved. We asked about seam designs, whether they should be bolted together with a bolt-type pattern that would actually be visible from the street, or whether there would be some type of a seam that would show us just a small, very, very thin groove in the, in the surface. As far as I'm concerned, the seam design is, is the way to go. I don't think we want to get into a lot of bolts and a lot of exposed metal. I noticed here that the panel options, I can talk to maybe Clara about this, but I'm a little confused about panel options. I don't think we spoke in detail about that. That's number one. And then also, there's a seam frequency, which I guess we can't do a whole lot about. It is, in fact, what it is, but the longer the seams, the more preferable for me. But I definitely want an arch. I don't want something that's, that's segmented, if you know, if you know what I'm saying. So, having said that, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, it's, it's come a long way, and the reality is that this is not one piece of steel. It's not a smooth piece of steel. It is actually a bunch of pieces, it's one, it's a substructure of structural steel that is being wrapped in sheet metal, heavy gauge sheet metal. And so, once we grab that idea, that's when all of the questions came up as to how, one, how we're going to put it together, how, what is it going to look like? And I think ultimately, it boils down to what is it going to look like? Is it going to look anything like any of these drawings that we've been presented with over the last few months, few years? I think we've gotten closer. I do agree that the, that the seams, the bent and clipped seam design is, is the best. I just hope and pray that the sections that we do get put together, fit together as nicely as the seam looks and as nicely as the renderings and the drawings show. I, if that's how it turns out, then I'd like to have as few seams as possible and as, as representative of a smooth arch as, as we can achieve.
The other thing we talked about was the, the lighting of the arch, or, or the fact that maybe it didn't have to be lit. The electrical conduit facilities will in fact be in the base, whether we use them or not at this point in time, but the feeling was that it would have a lot of light just on its own because it would be illuminated from the, the actual platform, which has substantial lighting, and also the tunnel over which it goes is, is going to be illuminated also. So we weren't, we didn't have a big concern about trying to illuminate it at, at night, and we didn't definitely want to impose on drivers' eyes driving up San Bruno Avenue. So I, my, my personal feeling is that we do not illuminate it for evening, and that if we wanted to in the future for, for one reason or another, the electrical is there. It's not that big of a deal to just, you know, install some fixtures. So that would be, from the bottom up, we wouldn't put anything on the arch at all.
Just a couple of observations. The materials that you have in front of you identify that a smooth semicircular arch in order to fabricate will require, I believe it's 17 pieces that will be joined together. And the consensus, I think, at the conversation yesterday was that they would be joined together in a manner that uses the clip technology as opposed to being bolted, in order that it would receive then as smooth as possible an appearance. You have a picture in your packet, this one, that shows the way that the steel is bent and then clipped on its backside, and then it has, at the join location, essentially a small groove or a divot that would be unavoidable but would not be particularly obtrusive to the continuous appearance of the, of the arch as viewed from the street. Whereas a different technology being, using bolts would be a more visible and perhaps noisy visual appearance to the, to the person who is standing near the arch. So based on, on our understanding, there would be, as I said, 17 pieces that would be joined with the clip technology. Material would be painted and would be finished so that those joints would be as invisible as possible, although they're, as the pictures depict, you might be able to see a line where the, where the seam actually occurs.
Well, I guess, I guess what's left is to, to look at these panel options because this is what's, which is very new. Obviously, we want the least amount of seams. We'd like to go with the four-panel layout, option two. I'm still concerned at how this option two is being depicted in four pieces and actually having a, a edge, you know, on four, four edges. What we experienced yesterday was a panel that was bent, so it would be a, more of a smoother, smoother transition. Now it looks as if we're going to have, you know, an, an edge detail.
Is that just because the panel options given to us here, you weren't able to do a rounded corner, or is that, is this actually what is proposed?
Yeah, I think we're going to need to ask Rafael Boland to respond to those questions.
I'm sorry, you're looking at the panel options sheet here?
Yeah, right at, at the mic, yeah. The one that says, the one that says panel options.
Yeah, okay.
And it's on the screen.
Okay, so the first thing I should mention on this is, it's exaggerated, obviously the size is exaggerated for effect, so the one you're seeing on the left side is attempting to show three pieces, three sides of it bent, similar to what you saw yesterday. So it would be, it would be approximately that radius.
The radius we saw, yes, it's actual radius, it's not an angle.
Correct. It isn't quite a ninety, a perfect ninety. There is a slight radius to that.
No, but I mean, what you're showing here is actually an angle.
Like three bends.
Yeah, so three sides would be bent, and then the fourth face, which would be the side that's opposite from the viewer from San Bruno, so the backside of the arch, would be proposed to be clipped.
Let me ask it another way. Item, letter P on option one is a bullnose?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't show that, but I just want to make sure that, that's understood.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, yes, I understand your question now, sorry. You mean it's a radius in lieu of an actual chamfer? That is correct, yes. It isn't shown properly on the drawing, correct. It would be rounded, if that's your question, yes.
And why can't, why can't the four-panel depict that?
Why couldn't all four sides look like?
Well, I mean, so what I'm not clear on is, you know, F means that there is field connections. So how, how are those four panels going to be connected now?
You're talking about the one on the right now?
On the right.
Yeah, so in that scenario, you would clip or connect all four. You bring four separate rectangles up in the air and then assemble a box. In, in the one to the left, it's, you're bringing up a C-shaped, almost a box, and then you're sealing the box behind.
Okay, so this is, this is now another curveball because we, originally we were concerned about how each section was going to butt up against each other as we went along the arch.
Correct.
Now, now you've presented something as to different, as to what it's going to look like
Correct.
On the edge. We know we're going to have these seams.
Correct.
Now we're going to have something
Correct.
More prominent, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's what we were trying to show there because in plan, when you're actually looking at it in dark green, it's difficult to see on the first image that there really is a seam running along the top and the bottom. But if you can make out the black on the green, then you've got better eyes than I do. So what we try to do is zoom in on it to show that, yes, exactly right. What we were talking about yesterday was primarily that there would be seams as each piece matted up against the next piece, and that's still true, but in addition, there'd have to be something, you can't get a perfect ninety without welding and grinding flush. So either you bend it, like the piece you saw yesterday, or you're going to have a slight recess where the clip joins the next clip.
Okay, can we go back to that panel again? So why, why can't we have the, the C on, on the, the four-panel out, if we were to flip that ninety degrees? So that you can have that exposed edge facing up, up and down, instead of sideways?
So, so you can. In, in the one you're seeing there is an option two, remember that the intent was to use mechanical fasteners, either bolts or rivets or something? If you were going to weld it, which is one of the things we talked about yesterday, then you absolutely would. You'd flush mount it, so you wouldn't see that little recess like you see there. The only reason why it's, it's slightly inset is so that you could screw it or bolt it or do something to it. But if you're willing to put it welded, then yes, you're correct, it would look like a ninety degree.
So option two is not, is not a clip, is not a clip installation?
So the, yeah, so you have basically, one side was overlapped and bolted. This could be, this could be any one of those versions. It could be clipped and still have all four sides, it could be welded and have all four sides. This particular one happens to be showing a, a bolted connection.
So, for everyone watching, if, if we want the cleanest design with the clips and the seams, we go with the C-shaped panel layout, option one, which also has more, more sections. So it, so we don't have, we really don't have a choice of choosing between one to two or two to, one to two seam frequency or two to two seam frequency. We have to go with one to two seam frequency, which is a lot more sections.
If you want it clean.
Yeah, and we just have to hope that it's clean.
Our, our designer also feels there's advantages to that, simply because it's a lot easier to build those segments with parallel straight lines than it would be to try to create each single piece with a curve. So the smaller the segment gets, I know it means more seams, but the smaller the segment gets, the more a series of straight lines looks like an arch. If you were going to go with like these eight-foot spacings, which you could, you've just added an additional level of complexity. So, so it would never look like that bottom one where it looks like a truncated 24-piece thing. What we would instead do is try to curve each separate segment, but given that these are already custom-made clipped-on panels, you've just made it significantly more complicated, right? Because now everything's got to have the correct radii and still mat up on the bottom. So we think we could do it, but the complexity goes way up. Because now you're curving plate, you're doing all kinds of stuff that you're not doing in the other shorter panel configuration.
It's not an easy thing to build.
No, not at all. So you're saying either way, it's going to be segmented, it's not actually going to be curved?
So it, it will be curved. What I'm saying is that it will be, each four-foot section would be a series of straight lines that taken together give the effect of a curve. If you actually try to cut a curve into each piece, then you would have to physically bend every single flash, like your, those nice little clips we were showing would have to somehow also be curved to make that work. So the thought was if the panel sizes got a little bit smaller, the smaller the panel size, the more it looks like a curve.
It's so ironic because the structural steel is, is bent.
Correct.
It's totally curved.
Correct.
And now, now we're, now we're facing it, we're cladding the structural steel, and we can't curve it.
We, we can curve it. It is, it is a doable thing. I'm just going off what my designer recommended, and that's if you're using a clip-type application. There are, as we talked about, there's other ways to do it. I mean, you, we always have the option of welding it and grinding it flush, in which case you can make steel do whatever you want it to do. Because as, as you correctly point out, I mean, that steel was a straight hollow structural section that we took and bent, so I mean, it's, you can do it.
Just more expensive and more complicated.
Well, it would be, I mean, it would be a piece of cake if it was all the same. It's two feet at the top and four feet at the edge, so every piece is, every piece is different, I understand that.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's the problem. And it, again, doesn't mean it's, it's not doable, it's just that the, the concern that one piece doesn't matter perfectly, as I mentioned yesterday, it just becomes an issue of, if you had a whole bunch of pieces that were all identical, you could substitute one if you got a, you know, a bad apple, but if you, if each one of these has to fit like a jigsaw puzzle, it's just, there's more risk on the schedule, more risk on the, on the fabrication tolerance.
So I might as well ask, so is there a cost factor here?
There is. So unfortunately, I don't know if you have in your packet the last sheet that says options matrix? You weren't possibly?
No.
Not, I can just go through it, yeah. So what I attempted to do is look at what I considered to be broadly speaking, and there's a bunch of choices in your packet, obviously, but broadly speaking, the three main ways that this thing could be assembled. So starting with the assumption that it's, it's going to be an arch, that it's going to be made out of, out of a solid sheet metal type of construction, your options would be to use some kind of physical, so either a rivet or a bolt. Option two would be those clips that we talked about, and option three would be to weld it and grind it flush. I wasn't able by council time to get a firm price on what those panels cost. It would have to be a custom application because the people who sell these typically sell them for buildings and they sell them as rectangles. So what we'd be looking for is sort of a 3D parallelogram, so it'd be a little bit more complicated. I don't, I'm not exactly sure the prices, I'll get that. I do know that the time would go up because of the procurement. The sheet metal where the bolted shop welds, that is sort of the baseline, what, what you saw previously. The only reason the price went down nominally from what you saw before is that I took out the eighty-six thousand for the elevator glass that is no longer being considered. And then finally, the sheet metal using all welded seams, that would definitely increase the cost because now you're welding, you're actually doing some relatively cumbersome welds, some of which have to be done upside down in the air. In addition, the biggest single driver of cost increase in that is that placing panels and screwing them on shoring is one thing, but now actually having to perform welding on a platform is going to require a more robust platform and shoring and things like that. That plus a small increase in the design costs is where I got that hundred-and-fifty-thousand increase from the base version you saw. That also, as I, as I mentioned, has a schedule impact. It's approximately an additional month to erect that type of arch in the field. It's almost three continuous weeks of welding with two crews to get that in, and then there's some grinding and painting, so for a total of four additional weeks on the schedule.
So I don't want to hash over it, but I want to, do want to go over it. What did you figure originally?
What did I think, the original solid arch?
We agreed to pay for half of what we were going to get, was going to be an arch, and
Correct.
It was going to cost X number of dollars.
Correct. So what would you?
And so, what did you figure originally?
What was my original estimate for an arch?
And what were you going to do for that amount of money?
Okay, so the original estimate was 1.2 million, and that was the construction as well as design, management, et cetera, et cetera. What that included is an arch. At that point, we were talking about an internally lit arch that would have Plexiglas on two faces with LED lights, the one, the one you'd look at right coming up San Bruno, the other one right off the platform, and then sheet metal top and bottom. In addition, included in that 1.2 million was, I don't recall the exact figure, but there were some monies for one elevator glass to be upgraded, if you will, from a clear glass to a glass that matched the same color scheme for the elevator. So that was my estimate of 1.2 million. That was basically the scope of which I estimated that off of.
Then I thought a few months ago, well, a few weeks ago, when the big push was on and we have to know right now what it is,
Right.
If in fact, it's going to be metal, it's going to be cheaper.
Correct. So there's one interim step in there, if I may, which is that although it's absolutely true that November 2012, I did an estimate of 1.2 million, a lot of things did change in the scope, including, you know, the foundations got a lot bigger, the steel structural element significantly more robust than what I anticipated back in 2012. There's a number of reasons why this, these things happened, and so my estimate on that had actually gone up from 1.2 to 1.4 million for the same basic scope. And so, yes, I did another estimate for removing some of the features and looking at a solid metal scope, and that was, again, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was 1.16 million dollars construction, again, including an amount for a green elevator glazing as well. So all I did is I took that same 1.165 and I removed eighty-six thousand dollars, which is the line item for the green glass, and that's where I got that first 1.1 million. However, the only way we were ever able to get schedule extension out, as far as we have been on a, on a solid metal arch, was to basically take a very similar approach to what we've been talking about previously, but in lieu of putting in this lighting system and in lieu of putting in Plexiglas, was to just go in with effectively a box made out of sheet metal. Subsequent to that, I understood there were lots of concerns regarding specifically how the seams would come together, and that brought into play other manufacturing methods that could minimize that. So those were the, the things we talked about yesterday, so the, either welding it or some kind of clip-on application. That was not my assumption when I, when I came to the staff and said that it was 1.165. My assumption at that point was very similar to what you saw earlier in this presentation as a, as a bolted-on finish. It would effectively be the same skeleton and the same mesh, if you will, as was proposed previously, and then in lieu of the clear glazing and lighting, it was just going to be sheet metal. So, I mean, obviously, as, as scopes change, I mean, I have to fine-tune my, my estimate as well. And schedule.
For the clips, clip system, you don't have a figure, but it's safe to say that it'll be somewhere in between the 1.1 and 1.35?
I think that's safe to say.
Is it?
I am caught, a, a big component of that is going to be how quickly we need it delivered, because this will be a custom application. So I've reached out to a couple of manufacturers of this, but I, no, I wasn't able to get a response on dollars by this evening.
I mean, what do, what do we face with as far as a decision tonight? And I guess Rafael, you can tell us also. What do you need? I mean, we just got this an hour and a half ago, so...
Right. I understand.
Yeah.
So, I think...
Rafael?
Yeah.
Excuse me, through the chair. Could you just, Councilman asked a great question, but let's, let's cut to the chase, let's not measure the words.
Okay.
Let's just say what it is, let's... Let's just say what it is, let's, we've been dealing with this for a long time, and the longer it goes and the more I hear in all of this, you know, I'm glad I wasn't on the subcommittee, to be blunt, but could we just, but I mean, be very clear.
Okay.
Very concise so that we all are on the same page.
I'm doing my best.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, very simply, we're at the point that if we don't get a decision to proceed with a bolted sheet metal type connection for an arch, then the arch, from a schedule point of view, cannot be constructed under the San Bruno Grade Sap contract. Does that mean we need to stop looking at arch options? I would suggest no. I think we just have to look at a different contractual mechanism to accomplish that.
Which means more cost?
Yes. That is correct. More time and more money, yes.
There's a lot of negative things we could say about how all this went one way and another way and incomplete information, and then we changed things and all that stuff. But the bottom line is, there's an arch, it's attractive-looking, it's interesting, in my opinion, and the options you have here, I think, if it's painted this color, I don't think there's a big difference between the bolted and the clipped. And the Golden Gate Bridge is bolted, nobody pays any attention to it, nobody looks at the bolts and says, ooh, they're ugly or anything, it's just how it is. So in my opinion, I think your option one would do fine. I think it's, it would, it would be an added attraction to the, to the whole structure, and I think it would be what people were way back originally looking for. So, that's my opinion.
The frustration with me is, first of all, I think the bolts are industrial-looking, but we can get over it because we're going to grow and it's going to grow on it, you know, how this all transpired. Very upsetting that we talked about this many, many, many months ago, and when we paid, I think the quote was twenty-five thousand dollars for a so-called mock-up which was slapped together in literally a half hour, and it looked like we'd be driving up San Bruno Avenue saying, welcome to the biggest little city in the world, because it looked like junk. I was really disappointed after that. So, and I'm disappointed with this too, because I thought the JPB, after all of this discussion and all of this rush, rush, we have to know right now that you'd have some specific ideas and details as to how this really could work. It wasn't explored, it sounded like, till yesterday afternoon. I mean, you had a big steel structure underneath, and that's fine, that can all be fabricated, but now we have to have a bigger foundation, and now the only way to bring it in under cost is to bolt it together, and it'll look fine. That part really, and the bottom line doesn't worry me, but it's how we got there that's very upsetting, and I'm very, very disappointed. And please pass it on to Mark Simon and Mike Scanlon about how this all transpired because, you know, this, to be the end of this project and a highlight for us, it's going to look great, but it still leaves a very bad taste in my mouth, how it happened and how it came to this point. So as far as I'm concerned, if that's, if that's what we need to do to get this done, I'm not going to spend any more money, that's for sure, especially on something we don't even know what it's going to cost. If you can do this bolted and actually powder-coated, if you will, arch to make this look, look right, then I'll go along with it.
Well said, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to belabor it. What we found out is that we don't have an option. We agreed on a price, and the price was whatever we were going to get. And we just sort of slowed, slowed the process down so that we could better learn what we were going to get. And I think it's been said in many subcommittee meetings and even here, what we expect and what we hope we're going to get and what we're visually going to see. If it's got bolts, fine, but I really don't think, I mean, you're in the business for building railroads, great separations, and it's, I think it's simple to say that, safe to say, that none of us or anyone was, is in the business to build an arch like this. I think we, we got sold a bill of goods by Phil Paoli, they stuck with that, now we've had professionals, fabricators, trying to figure out what they were thinking. And I think they've done their best, you know, to interpret it. And I just, I'm not going to hold my breath, but I think it will look good and we'll, you know, we'll be better for it and we'll be pleased when it is finished. But yeah, no more delays, no more guessing as to what we're going to get or something. You know what, you know what we expect and, you know, you go forward.
Rico, any comments?
I don't know if I can add too much. I share the comments of my colleagues and the disappointment and frustration that the mayor indicated. One of the things that I voted for this, though, was a contribution toward the community on your agency, was about having something to the gateway. It was about an area and a neighborhood who have gone through the BART, who's gone through this, and who deserved something in addition to this community as a whole. So I've heard hope, and hope, to me, is not a plan, but I'm going to tell you, I'm going to pray a little, that when the end comes and the result is finished, that we all stand back and say, looks good, job well done. I'm not going to hold my breath either, but how we've gotten here and all the course of the way, I can go on and on, but I think it's been articulated, and so I agree, let's get it done and let's move on.
Okay. You have direction from council, Ken?
I just want to thank Irene O'Connell for her, for her comments because that gets us into a more positive thought process. And so if you're satisfied with it, then I think we'll.
Any questions from staff?
No, I just want to note that the city council has previously authorized fifty percent of the original one-point-two-million-dollar estimate, and we have, I believe, appropriated those funds accordingly. The, I want to be clear that the, what I'm hearing from JPB staff is that even with the bolted fabrication, the total cost of the structure could go above the one-point-two million, up to, I think I heard Mr. Billen say, one-point-three-five million. And that, I just want to be clear that, given the many previous discussions about that potential for cost increase, that the council's authorization is comfortable up to fifty percent of that larger amount.
I, I'm reading it here, and it says sheet metal all seams welded and ground, one-point-three-five.
Pardon me?
It says sheet metal all seams welded and ground, one-point-three-five. Sheet metal bolted shop welded, one-point-one.
Okay, so I guess.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so then, what would be helpful to staff is your expectation of a cost, and so what I'm, with that clarification then, what staff is understanding is that the expectation is an arch that is fabricated, at least with the bolts and with the appearance that's been presented here tonight, less than the one-point-two-million-dollar, one-point-one-million-dollar level of authorization?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, and from JPB, that's what we're to expect?
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.